In Manchester, we are currently working on upgrading all their ventilation. Many of those schools were built in the nineteen twenties and they've had three rounds of ventilation upgrades. So first they put in unit vents to bring ventilation to the classroom. Then they replaced those and put in energy recovery ventilators on the roofs. Now we are actually going in and putting in dehumidification to make it more comfortable. So the taxpayers of Sunapee have saved on skipping all those consequential steps of renovations of getting off of steam, getting off of pneumatic controls, adding ventilation. So there's been a lot of savings and a lot of maintenance. The downside is we still don't have ductwork forty years after mechanical ventilation was required. We don't have ADA compliance thirty years after ADA was required. So the building has just skipped a lot of renovations. It hasn't had a significant major renovation in almost forty years. Again, there's the oil boilers which are steam oil boilers which are at end of life. There are nice shafts that can be used to bring ductwork through. And we also have been awarded a grant where we could potentially replace these if the voters approve. Could replace these with a biomass boiler plant that could potentially heat this building and the gym building down below from a single furnace with backup propane. This was the plan that we spent a lot of time on trying to find an economical solution to solve all the problems, both from a site standpoint and from keeping these kids in the envelope as much as possible. We proposed last year a small addition to the right-hand side of the building that's in green and reconfiguring the access road so that kids aren't walking across the road to go to the playground. So the playground would be brought to the right-hand side. In the addition, we would eliminate the need for modular classrooms. And we would put the cafeteria in that addition and put the library down where the cafeteria was. So that way we would have a loading dock, a fully code compliant functional modern kitchen, and a better library space. So this project was one that came after taking lots of opinions, lots of feedback, compromise. It was brought to the voters. It did get the majority of the vote, but an insufficient amount to pass. This is a lot of detail here that we can probably jump into again at some point. But these plans show what would go in each space of the addition, the proposed addition that was again defeated last year, and what the school would look like. It would add ventilation, fix the boiler system, fix all these space issues that we brought up, and make the building code and ADA compliant. And that's again what it would have looked like with the addition to the left-hand side. And there's again some renderings that were used. So next steps, we have met with SAU just to kind of talk about next steps and talk about the results, some lessons learned. One thing that was exciting, the project did get, I believe it was fifty-six or fifty-seven percent of the vote. So I think it failed by about forty-five votes. So it was very, it was very close. And as an outsider coming in, a lot of times we talk about projects like this and almost no one shows up. Like I've had volunteerings where one or two people come on twenty million dollar projects. So to deal with a community like Sunapee where this much engagement, there was tons of support, there was, you know, vocal opposition, that's, it's great. It says a lot about your community that there's this much care about the schools and their future from both sides. It was, I found that very encouraging. This one, one new piece of information is there was, there was a couple stimulus bills or COVID relief bills that were passed by the federal government. They call them ESSRA. I don't even remember what ESSRA stands for. But that money went from the Federal Department of Education to the State Department of Education. And that money provided, I think, just under five hundred thousand that can be used toward a ventilation project. It can also be used toward other things. But that's one new piece of information that there is some federal funds that are available. And that's, Manchester is using that funding to do those projects I spoke about. The money is allocated based on number of students in the free and reduced lunch program. So the poorer communities got substantial amounts of money. So Manchester by comparison got fifty-eight million dollars of ESSRA funds compared to the five hundred thousand. And it's all about the free and reduced lunch. So the more, the more lower income students you have, the more money you get. Next steps, so it's up to the board and to consider, do we bring this bond forward again? It's not uncommon if we have the right plan in New Hampshire and it's close to bring it forward. Pallan Middle School failed with fifty-eight percent the first time and then it passed the second time. That happened the same day that we voted, that Sunapee voted it down. Allentown, which I never thought would pass, their massive project on the same day passed their project as well by a slim margin. They're not SP two, so sometimes it's easier when you're in a town with, you're presenting to all the voters at once to get consensus. Sometimes it's a little harder to get a consensus with the ballot vote. New Hampshire has this sixty percent threshold to make it, the intent is to make it hard to pass these projects. If you look at the presidential election, it's very rare that a candidate gets sixty percent of the vote in New Hampshire. It's, I think, in Sunapee Biden got fifty-seven percent. So getting to sixty percent is something only Governor Sununu can do in the state. It's really, it's not an easy, it's not an easy threshold. And so I think they intentionally make, the legislature made these projects hard to pass. So there's a, there's a couple next steps that we could consider. One would be to relook at the pricing for that bond and see where it's gone up. There is no doubt that material costs have gone up. Our quick check would be a single, a single digit to low double-digit increase in projects. So somewhere between seven and twelve percent is where it fluctuates all the time. So I hate to commit to that right this second because steel goes up, wood goes up, it goes down. But it's definitely higher than it was last year. But the good news is it's not twenty percent higher, it's in the, again, seven to twelve range. And then the other option, I guess, that could be considered is in lieu of bringing the full bond vote or maybe in addition to bringing something that would move the ball forward at least, like addressing the heating code compliance and ventilation with a warrant article separate or together with a lease rate bond. So those are some of the next steps and thoughts for considerations.
Well, the public understands what we're doing. This is Mike updating us. We're trying to make it as user-friendly as possible to you. The board's gonna talk about what we want to do, direction we want to head. Once that is decided by the board, we will have forums. I think the forums were passed on Zoom if the board's okay with that. They gave a lot of people home who wouldn't otherwise come to a meeting, plus we have Delta and all these other reasons. So we can do Q and A forums and formative exchanges on Zoom, we can get to that. But tonight is for us to ideally reach consensus because we need to, at least three of us want to, need to preempt something to go forward with. So CIP, capital improvements, subcommittee, Andy Eagles, Kerry Claus, we lead the way.
Can you switch the update to panel?
Well, I was just, I was just looking at the agenda and yes, I didn't, I didn't move it. But I think with, we can just slide that over. It's just more natural. You guys take it from here and then we can ask questions, we can have a discussion.
Sure. So, you know, what I've heard from some of the folks in town is that, you know, last year with the war narc, it was written, it would have been written maybe a little differently with some state funding in mind, that we would maybe gone over the threshold. But, I mean, that's really hindsight. We can't look back, we've gone a little forward. So, I mean, I, I'm surprised that the cost of the project has only gone up, you know, in low double digits or high single digits because, you know, I'm in the construction field and we see prices. For instance, one of our steel pieces that we use a tremendous amount of went up eight hundred percent this year, one item. So I know Jesse, you're in that field also, so you've seen what it's done. You know, it's been crazy what it's done to projects and some of them it makes totally unaffordable. The other, the other really good news is that we did receive the biomass grant and we do have some ESSRA money to spend. So I know that Kerry and I have been talking about what it would look like possibly to just upgrade our HVAC system at the elementary school. Put in an HVAC system at the elementary school, not upgrade, which would include doing some structural work to the roof system because our roof will not support any type of HVAC system the way it exists. So it would require some structural upgrades, some electrical upgrades, and definitely, you know, all the HVAC systems. So we're kind of looking at that to see how much money that would cost so that by chance, maybe we come forward with two more articles this year or an option. Because to me, losing, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant money doesn't make a whole lot of sense when we don't have an HVAC system. And if we did do this work, we would like to do it in a way that two years down the road, next year, five years, if we want to continue and add on to the school and do other upgrades, that we're not gonna pay for it twice. You know, we want to make that initial investment that would be a piece of the later project and wouldn't cost us more money down the road. You have to upgrade our electrical again, or upgrade the roof again. We want to take care of that on this first go around. So we're trying to look at that. Also, talking about the modules, the modulars are in absolute horrible shape. Whether we have to either look at renting modulars or possibly purchasing another module. But modulars aren't cheap and I hate to throw that out there because they're only, they're gonna have shelf life also. I mean, it's not gonna be fifty-year shelf life, you know. So I'm not a big fan of the modulars, but if we don't get that extra space, we have to do something with our old modulars, whether we dump a bunch of money into those and Band-Aid them up or possibly look at used ones, releasing them. That's all still a topic of discussion with us. So that's kind of what's going on my wall, let Kerry continue on.
Yeah, I guess, just to be clear, I think, and correct, wrong, equal relating is we think that we want to move forward with the plan as we had it last year. But what we're also considering is this alternative option to deal with some of the most critical issues that have just languished for a long time and for the sense of responsibility to do something about. So I wanted to just bring it to the board and I wanted to get your thoughts and pattern at this point as to what you think about this as an overall plan. Whether you favor bringing back the plan from last year. Two, or an alternative option to consider that, again, just to our most critical items. So I just wanted to get some direction from the rest of you before we continue moving forward.
My understanding you created the biomass money.
Well, my understanding that the biomass money, if I heard this correctly, you would make improvements to the elementary school by the future. A new project that easily adapt to it as well as in that plan addressing the modulars.
Sort of like Plan B if we don't go to the full project? The way I would like to look at it is I am in support of the full project because I think it makes the most sense. I don't want to put money into the modulars or new modulars or lease them, but we're at the end of shelf life of those. So for the record, I definitely like that. But if we decide not to go that way or if we want to have a second article, my fear is I don't want to lose the ESSRA money or that biomass grant that we have. I mean, it could basically be thrown away three quarters of a million dollars. Of items that we could upgrade that won't cost us more money in the future. So those would be like cherry picking them off the big project and saying, we're gonna upgrade the roof, we're gonna upgrade the electrical, we're gonna do the plumbing, we're gonna do the HVAC. And that, that will still be in place for the next phase of the project if we so choose to do that or the next board chooses to do that. And it won't cost the taxpayers more money again to redo what we just did.
Like with that, will you approve the Plan B? To just get that. Will you approve the Plan B?
We have to really think about what we gotta do. We gotta come up with some solution, whether we put money into them or whether we buy used ones, buy new ones, lease them, rent them, but the.
You have to deal with it.
That we have to deal with. I mean, they're literally, the ceilings are falling back.
Well, I guess I, earlier when we were having a couple of comment, it was great to hear from younger parents, parents of younger kids and a couple of parents, I think, that are relatively new to the district. And I guess I just want to use this as an opportunity to really, really encourage y'all and people you know to engage in this process. You know, honestly, I don't think any of us board members has had a child in that building for a couple of years now. But, but really, when the New Hampshire Department of Education essentially told us last year, y'all have very serious problems with life safety, with security and with space adequacy. That impacts both the kids and the dedicated employees that teach our kids who are in that building every day. And there's a minority that say, wait, wait, wait. Well, it's our responsibility to make sure that our students and our employees live and work in a building that's safe and secure and adequate. And so I guess to make a long story short, I'm certainly in favor of continuing to push forward in a, with a plan to make this right. And again, the board, I think, would really, really love to have the parents of the younger students, the upcoming students, to be engaged in this process. It would mean a lot to all of us to really hear from you and to have you be a part of this process.
Yeah, I second your motion. But I, I agree with you. This, if it helps, I've mentioned this over the years. I ran through the school board because I was in total shock at the condition of the elementary school. I'd served in the school board in a very poor county in Vermont before, so I knew what I was getting myself into. Although Sunapee's been very interesting. The, the condition of the school, when we had agreed to buy a house up on the hill behind it, I just couldn't believe that people were okay with it. I understand multiple generations, you get used to it. Josh Chow, our select court chair, told the story when we first met about when he was there reading in those air ducts that you pull a chain to open to the roof to ventilate from nineteen twenty-nine. So I have very strong feelings, my public service is driven by my shock that the condition of the building and those modulars are completely unacceptable in past life. And it's the idea, also, we just had, this is here up in Lebanon area today. It threw some people off that we had a highly coordinated multi-crew involved in an active shooter drill. And what we have, though we have a plan that we're recognized for from homeland because we have a good plan, if something happens, we have children in the modulars, we have children and staff in the school, we have them in the gym. If something happens, shelter in place, run high fight, those kids and whoever's staff with their whip, they're isolated, they're responsible. So beyond the ceilings falling and it being just completely unacceptable that we have children and staff there, we also have some larger issues, longer-term issues, ADA compliance, and a bunch of other things that have, that aren't going away. So I appreciate the work we've done on this. I think the plan you brought forward last year, fewer than forty-two votes passed against it. It's an excellent plan. I fully support bringing the same plan back. And I'm encouraged that you think of an alternative, alternative that we can do the major infrastructure to greatly reduce the unacceptably long list of life-saving issues. I think a lot of positivity and I really do, and I'm sorry I jumped around. I totally support what you said and I don't want to repeat the whole thing again. If young families want to see their kids graduate from school, the families that are considering coming here, the more active, that voice has been missing. It's a great opportunity to take that and do what you wish to the parents of the kids coming up. So the board can hear it, the community can hear it. But I think that doing the plan as you proposed, bringing the same one back is an incredible win for our town, really positive. There's not a lot positive in the world and I think that's what we should do. Do you have that full support? Any other comments or questions around that? If you have what you need to add to us. All right, Mike, thank you very much for the work and the help. We're gonna get into an extended conversation about policy with the legislature keeping us very busy. And I know you have young families, so I'm gonna, in a friendly way, give you a good day. Thank you for the presentation. Russ, do you want to add a comment?
All right, we are on, I've never seen, in years of service, I've never seen a list of policies this extensive. But thankfully, Scott Ritzman's in the house to take care of this and make this a reasonable riot. Floor is yours.
First of all, I'm gonna, as long as it's appropriate, not read through that entire list. But I guess what I will just make a motion of is that the policy is listed for first reading. I'd made on the agenda, as listed on the agenda, I make a motion to vote on those for first reading.
Can I?
I'll second that motion. There is a, an eighty-plus page PDF in our meeting folder. And real quick again, just to speak to a couple of faces I haven't seen before that are here tonight. If you go to the school board section of the website and there's an agenda section, you can go into there and pull up tonight's agenda. And behind the agenda and the pages that follow within that PDF, you'll see all of the policies that are on this list that we're putting out for first reading tonight. So with that said, there's just a couple of policies I think I want to address tonight. I guess I would encourage, you know, my board colleagues to take a look at those eighty pages between now and next meeting when we have the second reading. And if you do have any questions or things that you want to address with those, you know, certainly bring those forward next week. The first one I do want to just mention, if you go to the fourth page of the PDF, that's the policy that relates, I think it's the fourth page of the PDF. That's the policy about minutes, B E D G. And also, we've really done with that policy is I think we've moved the pieces about minutes of non-public sessions into this policy. That way, everything about minutes is basically more policy. But what I wanted to point out, you know, there's been some comments and questions about our minutes at recent meetings. When you look at this policy, you can see that the six or seven things that we are required to include in the minutes are listed in this policy. And so it just struck me, you know, when I look at this list, it's pretty streamlined and basic. There's not a lot of meat to it. And it just reinforced to me that we go above and beyond, well above and beyond what we do with our minutes. And I think we're in pretty good shape from that perspective. So, you know, just as follow-up to recent, you know, comments, you may want to look at that. And I think we're doing pretty well. You know, in any public or private board I've been on or other organization, you know, it's never been the intent of the minutes to be a verbatim review of the meeting. It just basically gives the general gist of what happened and I think you get that from our minutes. So, yeah, take a look at that, you know, if a chance. And, you know, if any of you feel like we do need to do anything different with our minutes, you know, certainly, you know, speak up. The other one I wanted to talk about real briefly is the policy I D academic freedom, which is, I believe, page fifty or fifty-one of the PDF, if you want to scroll to that real quick. So basically, I wanted to point this out just because it's another one where there's been some commentary or questions. And I just wanted to make sure we all understood that as it relates to RSA one ninety-three dash forty, which deals with, you know, discrimination and divisive concepts and what schools are prohibited, you know, from doing. We are moving forward with addressing RSA one ninety-three forty as required by law now. And in that revised policy, there are, I think, four bullet points that essentially address that. So, you know, more, I don't think anything else needs to be said on that, but I just want to do again, point it out because it's something that's been put out there. And again, take a look at it and if you have any questions or anything you want to discuss on that, we can, you know, certainly do that. If not tonight, at the second reading next week. But that being said, I think that's really all I have. I know I have other things to do tonight and it's out there for your consideration. And again, it's on the school website under the agendas for tonight's school board meeting. You can find that information.
Great, thank you. All in favor of supporting the first reading as noted and described in detail? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Appreciate the hard work and literally in this case, heavy lifting.
We had a good meeting last week.
That's great, there's a lot coming out and it's.
Did you just do a motion on rescinding policies?
Oh, I missed that, thank you for the nudge. I need a motion on the rescinded E A C C conduct on school buses, please.
I like a motion on rescinding policy, E A C C conduct on school buses.
I'll second it.
And just on that real quick, I mean, the reason why we're rescinding that is because there are some redundancies and that's being tied into policy J I C C, student conduct on school buses, which is in the list of policies that, you know, we're creating. So that's why we're rescinding that. We always try to clean up the policies as much as possible so that if someone does take the time to look at it, it makes sense.
I'll go ahead. Okay. All in favor of approving the motion on rescinding for E D A C C conduct on school buses? Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for clarification. So I put in, I guess more as an informal discussion, public comment. I went down from webinar, done a lot of reading, talked to our attorney. Our current policy came out a lot of time spent with our attorney and now first on the board, including you, the board, to explain and try to navigate forward. We have, the meeting ended last month with a very agitated attendee complaining about the time, wanting more time. So I thought it'd just be healthy with, have some emails and other things. I just think it's a healthy thing to check in on in some of our policies. So I'd love to, similarly what we did on masks and building, have just hear some thoughts on the current policy. What I'm expecting is we either want to continue with the policy as is or decide that we want to have a policy review, what that policy is and give them some guidance. Or we have two sections in the meeting, two public comment opportunities. Some boards have one. We don't have to have any, we can have none. We don't have to have any, we could have none, um, we could have three. It's really, the current policy is written with fifteen minutes set aside, twenty minute timed one, if you have comments. I do my best to put it in context and restate the rules and the policy that we follow, uh, every meeting. Um, but it shouldn't be just my voice on the public comment because I'm not in the meeting. So, anyone want to give their thoughts, uh, feelings on public comment in general on our current policy?
Well, I, uh, was actually, we need a two, three minute sessions and give it to one five minute session. I feel like the three minutes, we cut people short, whenever they had maybe one minute of stuff, but when they're ready to get it explained, uh, you can be very clear, you get lunch off, five minutes, so that you just get it all and you're better with the five minutes.
Instead of two session.
A three or a one-five.
I like Ed's idea of going to the one to five at the beginning. I'm not a lower of the B E D H, but I understand why the school board did it. But I, I do feel like we've never quite got a chance to discuss some of the items that the public does bring up. Uh, so I'm in favor of a one, one five minute session at the beginning of the meeting and then maybe curbing some time out at the end of our meeting to possibly discuss those items. If we don't know the answers to those items, we have to get the items, and at least that way they're addressed in minutes and that we have acknowledged what the public is thinking.
All right, Carrie, second question?
Yep, I, um, I would be in support of a one session. Um, I personally tend to err on sticking with the three minutes. I feel like if you want to make three minutes, there's plenty of time to be clear and concise to the point of what you're trying to say. Um, that, that's my opinion. And, but I do like the idea of having some time carved out with the board to have a discussion on anything that's raised that they're choosing, if there's something that you feel like that we want to address, um, and that we have some means of following up and having those discussions.
Great.
And if it means that we say, we'll shove it, we'll talk about it next meeting, but some like a capitalist discussion.
Yeah, option, there's, uh, the topics that we want to address that can be, um, the agenda items at the start of the next meeting too. That's how some boards have that towards cadence and respect and kind of concur with it too, so that's an easy option to consider. Scott, what are your thoughts on public comment?
I don't disagree with anything that my colleagues have said, you know. I mean, I think that, you know, one of the, the main purposes of this, you know, is to make sure the meeting keeps moving, you know, because we are here to conduct business and meet with each other and make sure we get done what we need to get done. You know, we don't need to get off the rails too much, but I think, you know, what everyone is suggesting is a good, you know, compromise perhaps. And, uh, I agree with Carrie, I think at a certain point, you know, if somebody is talking too long, they're only hurting themselves because of, you know, I mean, that's just the basic kind of public speaking, you want to make your point and, you know, move on. But, uh, you know, I'm fine with, um, what's been thrown out there, but I don't object to any of it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on the three minutes. Um, if you look tonight, there's only one challenge to the three minutes, everyone else made their comment, made their point, that's usually what happens. Um, if you send somebody a five minute video, they won't watch it, it's too long, three minutes you have a shot. Two minutes they'll actually watch it, you know, so, um, I, I think having a, considering a single session, although I'm with the three, we heard two others that said five, or do you have any?
About four.
Uh, so it feels like we're directionally in alignment, so what we can do is, um, proper process with the policy committee.
Can I, can I help you?
Yeah.
So you can send that back to policy committee, but this is your policy.
Right.
And you, you can craft this policy, by policy, you can amend this policy and you can pass this policy tonight. So I don't know if it makes sense to send the policy back to Sean yourself, Walter, Tara. It's your policy, I would make the recommendation, you decided you want the policy, we change it right now and you pass it for first and second approval, and it's down in place, you, and you have the authority by your policy to do that.
Yeah, this is, I think, the only policy that we can do this on, so I appreciate the nudge, but some are used to sending it back to policy.
So you need them to discuss?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna motion to put the policy on the table.
Yeah.
And then amend the policy, if you choose to amend it, we'll put it in words, you can then read it for a second.
I have a procedural question then, I guess, if we go that route and we look at it next time, first reading, you know, can we then, you know, edit it during the first reading, so, so to speak?
You, you certainly can, um, I can put it, again, you can do whatever.
So we got a couple of meetings basically to get it, if we can say.
You can choose to pass it tonight, you can let it go through the regular process. I don't think, I just don't think you need to put it back to the policy, you are right now the policy committee on this.
It doesn't become effective until it passes the second reading, so we've got a couple of meetings that we can.
Well, what I'm saying is you can, you have a policy that allows you to bypass that first and second reading, you got all tonight, you can want to finish this one.
Yeah, we, in my time on the board, I've never had a policy where we could just change it that night and have it for next meeting, so this is kind of fun. So I appreciate the clarity because I, again, you always send it back to policy, this is different. So, we talked about, um, just to, so whoever wants to make a motion, and there's some slight differences of opinion. But I heard recurring was a single session between three to five minutes. And then incorporating at the end, I think, I think that was the point that you had made well, that what are those, how we want to address those, either we have a discussion on the things that we note from public comment or we make it more formal and make things a little tighter from that. So, um.
Can I ask you again?
Yeah.
So, so I, I think your public comment, you're now determining whether it's going to be beginning and end and the amount of time. If you choose to put something on the agenda on which you would respond to or have information, that would necessarily be in your policy, that's an agenda rule, just to clarify.
Yeah. All right, so we're looking at.
I'll make a motion now, I'll take a stab at it. So I'd like to make a motion that we move our public comment to the beginning of, of our board meeting. And, uh, I think a fair compromise would be a four minute session per person.
Would you like to stay with the fifteen minutes?
I think we should extend it to twenty minutes so that we can be fair.
I will, yeah, well, we need a second to go to discussion, or.
I'll take it there.
Okay, so motion was for beginning of the meeting, four minutes. Since I've been running the meetings, I have started fifteen minutes, if there's people who want to speak, I want them to speak. So we have it in the policy, I'm just letting you know, for whatever duration on the chair, if another person wants to speak, I want to let them as your chair, and those things get wildly out of control and we can't do our business. It's never become a real issue, but I don't, um, if we're really pushing that, it's disrupting our meeting, I might be differently, but it rarely does. There's been a few times we've extended it a few minutes and that's my own choice, right?
Like in the history of how many years we've been having this policy in place, have we ever imposed, reinforced fifteen minute limit?
No, there's actually a policy that allows you to, the board should extend it.
Well, I'm supposed to make a motion.
Right, it's such a, I mean, if I looked around the room and if everybody wanted to speak that night, I feel like people are entitled to speak.
Yeah, and that's what I've done, and I do rarely go over, what I'm supposed to do procedurally, I've done, and I can hit that. A couple times we've gone over, like, in fifteen minutes, what I haven't done is look for, uh, motion from the board to expand it and go, I've just gone, you want to be the chair on these, there's some, they're some, they're still following the rules. So I just, priorities here in the public voice, I've never gone, had us distract them and go through that and do the same thing with them anyway. I just love, if there's people that want to speak, then they should speak, and they should have the, just to clarify, it's never approached that.
So on the table is, is the policy from E A. I'll probably do my best to show you the edits or to, not PDFs. Under the first bullet that starts with fifteen, cross that with the N and. Second bullet.
Yep.
Would be, it's the cross out of three, the word four, cross out the numeric three, the numeric four put in place.
Yep.
Next bullet, goes for four minutes and overall twenty minutes, so cross out three, cross out fifteen.
Yeah, and as we've often seen, probably thirty percent of the time, nobody says anything. But if you have, have issues like masks, COVID, new schools, unknowns in the future, it's there. It's, I think, more flexible, I think it's a little more community friendly, the way you've suggested, um, I, I like it, so. Uh, any other, while we're in discussion, any other amendments? Single session at the beginning, four minutes, twenty total, even if I, I don't tend to follow that. Anything else? That's just amazing to get to do this and not send it back, so. All in favor of approving the public participation at board's meeting policy, the E D, E A D H amendments as noted? Um, please say aye.
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 Aye. I can't believe we can do this, I can't believe we can do this before. Thank you for the, um, the edits to keep it straightforward and let me concentrate on this, thank you. All right. Uh, I need a motion to, I'll make a motion to go into, um, non-public.
We're not.
What's that?
We're not figuring out.
Did I not finish? Hold on a second.
We have two action items at the bottom of the call.
No, I'm putting non-public before the action items, I did that when I said the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
So this is intentional.
Got it.
So I'm making a motion to go with non-public, um, for ninety-one A three I I B, uh, the hiring of any person as a public employee and ninety-one A three I I C, matters which discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or the agency itself, unless such a person requests an over meeting. I need a second and a roll call vote.
One second.
Thank you. Um. Um, I need.
Roll over. Ed? Yes, Carrie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
You know, non-public.
Okay.
You can go.
We'll be back, continue the meeting.